That was provided by the chief executive to the fair for $5,000 to allow the fair to be a free event this year. They looked back at what the cost was and fair a free event this year. There was a $5,000 donation from the chief executive's office to promote that to be a free event like all of our other festivals are.
Okay.
Mr. Morgan.
The so the just trying to figure out what that acronym stood stood for.
Well.
The Arco redistribution.
Yeah, that's Arco, yes.
Chief Executive Vincent.
It's a redevelopment trust fund.
Yeah, it stands for super fund, super fund advisory redevelopment trust authority.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson, did you have any?
No, I just was adding that.
Okay.
Chief Executive.
All right. Is there any other questions? Commissioner Perdido.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one more. JP, do you know how many folks attended Evel Knievel Days? So we can kind of put a number with the 129,000 to put a number to how many folks attended? Thank you.
JP.
Commissioner Perdido, when as as we looked at these, we did not look to put the numbers to this because both Evel Knievel Days and Folk Festival had the University of Montana do surveys out there that has been made available for and I make sure that any data that we give you is accurate. And so I know last year as as EJ did his presentation, he put those numbers in with this. I didn't feel comfortable doing that without having real solid proof of putting those statistics in there. So we didn't add that in there because I didn't have a solid basis to add that to this.
All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. Moving on to on the agenda, is there any public comment on any items that are on the on the agenda? There's any public comments on any items that's on the agenda? Please come up to a microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dan O'Neil, 305 West Mercury. I haven't seen a copy of the agenda. Is there one available?
There is one, Mr. O'Neil, where you come into the door.
Well, there's a parking. Is there been any discussion on that?
I don't believe that is on tonight's agenda. But there is a spot after the agenda, Mr.
For for public comment?
Yeah.
For any.
It's not on tonight's agenda. So is there any other comments on any items that are on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to section three, which is communication number 15-356. Kenneth and Michelle Palmer, Nolde Street, B Montana requesting council's authorization to. This one in a band says we are waiting for a survey. Section four, communication number 15-415, Robert, Director of Butte Silver Bow Land Office requesting council's authorization for the sale of county-owned property under adjacent landowner policy and for the council to ask the county attorney to prepare the resolution in need for the transfer of the property. I will ask Commissioner Walker as we do have a resolution now. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This time I'd like to make a motion to cross-reference communication number 15-415 with resolution 15-48 and place on file.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to cross-reference communication 15-415 with resolution 15-48 and place on file. Is there anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Section five, communication number 15-470, Dave Palmer, Butte Silver Bow Commissioner District Number 12 requesting installed on Center Street speed zones or speed zone signs to be installed on Center Street, a tree on the corner of Buffalo and Main Street, and a review of the alarm at the fire station. Commissioner Palmer?
Just like to hold this in abeyance until the Centerville maybe has a meeting again.
Section six, communication number 15-490, Karen Burns, Director of Butte Silver Bow Development Department, so's authorization or council recommendation to approve council communication number 15-460, request from Blaine Brown to purchase city-county property under the adjacent landowner policy. We will continue to hold this one in abeyance. We're still waiting on a survey. Section seven, communication number 15-Jeffrey L. Miller, Director of Butte Silver Bow Fire Services requesting council's authorization to hold a public hearing on November. Self-contained breathing apparatus for the Butte Silver Bow Fire Department. Will continue to hold this in abeyance. We're waiting for a of the resolution. Section eight, communication number 15-525, Kelly Anderson, Extension Agent, Butte Silver Bow Extension Office requesting council's authorization for the chief executive to sign an agreement with Montana State University Extension Office. I know there is a request, this contract's acceptance date, I would refer to Chief Executive Vincent for an update.
Commissioner Moore, in the did make a meeting in this week's meeting. To the MSU Extension to grant us an extent grant a debtless, I don't know, contract from December 30th to 30th and J 30 for and reach some resolution. But I would I would make the point that as we move forward on this and it's we bank them for it because it would have been a short turnaround. But these are really two separate issues. The the contract, which includes everything, extension agent versus the resolution focus on resolving the communication issues relative to the 4H portion of that contract. So I just want folks to know when that does come to a vote, we need to keep in mind that this is not just a vote whether we continue our 4H program or not. We are voting to continue a contract that will allow us to continue our our extension agency and our relationship with the MSU Extension or not.
Okay. So we'll continue to hold that in abeyance pending a report back. Section 10, communicate, excuse me, section nine, communication number 15-527, Kevin Cannelli, Town Pumping Corporation requesting council's concer donation of the purbo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion at this time to cross-reference communication 10-527 with resolution 47 and place on file.
Second.
Motion to cross-communication 10-527 with resolution 15-47 and places communication on file. Is there anything on the question? Favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none. Section 10, communication number 15-53, Karen Burns, Director of Butte Silver Bow Community Development Department requesting council's authorization for a presentation on December 23, 2015 regarding the Butte Economic Gardening Project. As you heard me earlier, we are holding this one in abeyance until January the 27. 11, communicating 550, Edward Pape of Mr. Ed Saloon requesting council incorporate means for the chief executive, council of commissioners to answer questions presented by the public. I did I do not see Mr. Pape out there. Is there any from either Commissioner McDonough or anybody?
Commissioner McDonough. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I haven't heard from G D B Best to hold it in abeyance, I guess, and fleet has the chance to speak his mind, however, in front of us asking for dialogue between the council and members of the public. I think would violate public agendas and open meeting laws, but I'm not sure that his agenda is or his letter for his request is clear. So maybe the county attorney would want to weigh in on that part. But three parts of the communication deal with three different issues and his summary is that have an open dialogue with council, which I think clearly violates the agenda and public meeting laws. So maybe we'll hold it in abeyance, but I don't think his request is clear unless County Attorney Joyce wants to weigh in.
County Attorney Joyce.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner McDonough, does that mean I have a choice? I don't have the communication in front of me, but if his communication just ask for a general dialogue, that probably would violate the open meeting and public participation laws because you'd have to have a more specific item of that he wanted to discuss so the public would know what they whether they wanted to participate in that discussion. If his agenda, the request is more to just ask procedural questions, that's okay for the council to explain to him how to get a matter before the agenda and to discuss a specific item. But I think that would have to be explained to Mr. Pape if he does come to the council to explain that if he has a particular item he wants to discuss, he would have to submit a specific communication on that item and that you can't just have a forum back and forth questions.
Commissioner McDonough, do you think it'd be okay if you contacted him and let him know when our next committee of the whole meeting is and give him the opportunity to come before us and and tell us his case and then from there we can make a decision?
Chairman Morgan, I would constantly that to him. I've segregated from the regular meeting in January to if he shows up on the 7th to segregated at that.
Commissioner Fisher, you have a comment?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. If we recall last week, I believe it was, Mr. Pape came at the start of the meeting and we got a full house of people here and he came to Chairman Shaw and told her to pull his communication. Now, what he meant by that out of courtesy, Commissioner McDonough held it in abeyance. And I think he also maybe left a note for Commissioner McDonough that wasn't courtesy as well like done to give him. So at this time, I would make a motion that we note and place on file communication 15-550.
Motion to notes communication number 15-550 and place this communication on file. Is there anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Okay. Section 12, communication number 15-555, JP Gallagher, Director of Recreation requesting council's authorization to give a presentation on December 23, 2015 regarding the festival and fair cost breakdown. We held this presentation tonight, so I'd go to Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seeing as all that was held tonight, I would like to make a motion 15-555 on file.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to place communication 555 on file. Is there anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Communication number 15-Florrie Casey, Assistant Planning Director of Butte Silver Bow Planning Board requesting a public hearing on January 13, 2016 for the preliminary plat of the Copper Fox Estates. Will continue to hold this in abeyance until January the 13th for the public hearing. At this time on the agenda, I would ask for any public comment on any public matter that's not on tonight's agenda. Do you have any comments? Please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Mr. O'Neil.
My name's Dan O'Neil, 305 West Mercury Business Development Center. And since this is last, I guess I'll feel a little bit more confident to spend a little time on this issue or three issues. I have three printouts here and there's 12 copies. I'll keep one and then leave it when I'm done speaking. But then just leave it for you. I might address some of the issue and practice my public speaking. So I follow the paper, but I'm not really certain where you guys are at with the parking garage. But I wanted to focus a little bit on my experience with low bid and construction management identified on there. And by the way, commissioners, there is a letter. I don't really know what to call it. Transfer. And then there's also a Excel spreadsheet for the business of two that I have. So again, it says here, I'm not really certain with regards to parking garage, if anything's moving forward, if this topic is current or if as a resident wrote into the Montana standard that since their charter wasn't followed, if the whole thing's going to have to take a backseat and then come about in a different fashion. But briefly, I want to explain the low bid system in for the best method of a public works project act. When all known facts are taken into consideration and there's an accurate plan set factors get to bid, the low bid system does not work, does not work when the project owner, in this case, Butte Silver Bow allows for change. Now, the reason I'm bringing this up is orders have become a popular method in the construction industry to sidestep errors and omissions. You might use the word, I don't, I don't want to go so far as to say corruption, but it's a loophole. And that's when the architect or engineer that drafted the plan that was let allows for something, a change to occur. However, the loophole also creates an opportunity for abuse by contractors who can use the change order to exaggerate and inflate an additional cost when the project is in process. Sometimes those change orders are built in. And by built in, I mean communication between contractors, architects and engineers that we, the public, may not understand. Well, I have a little bit better insight to it now. So those change orders are built in to allow a winning contractor to generate additional income after the project is awarded, which would require additional work, which was planned, however unspecified, by the architect and or engineer to review and approve changes that are being considered. So as the paper has reported, so far the city is considering a construction manager. If the city is only allowing contractors with experience to bid the public process, then the low bid system is the only method that should be used. Because all things considered, a parking garage is a very simple and basic structure and the current construction methods have been around for more than 40 years. The contractors submitting a bid are very knowledgeable and experienced in their industry and any questions that may have arise should be answered with it. And a lot of times those questions, they don't want the questions. They want those to arise after the bidsman let. So allowing the construction manager option, it's what I feel should be discouraged because experienced contractors can take advantage of that position. It basically gives the contractor an open person checkbook. And with this option, experienced contractors may, one of the following, which all of which I've witnessed in my time in the construction industry, purchase excessive materials, some of which go to their storage yards rather than the job site. Another loophole is that contractors may pay retail pricing to the vendors rather than wholesale pricing and submit retail invoices for payment to the project owner. The vendor later returns the materials at retail price, resells them at wholesale price, and the contractor collects the difference, sometimes even split with the salesman. There are also some vendors who provide yearly and bi-yearly tropical vacations to their industry contractors who purchase a specific quantity of a particular item. Might be stealing. By doing this, or four-wheelers or snowmobiles, by doing this, it increases the contractor's cost of goods sold and reduces their taxable income. The vendor also reduces their taxable taxable income by chartering an airplane and paying all resort fees, which they can categorize as a travel and lodging expense. Meanwhile, the contractor is still covering all of his costs and the potential to lose money is virtually not possible. The government agency is none the wiser of what is actually occurring. Final manager option, the construction manager has less of a need to establish a completion date. This affects the labor cost by removing expediency and there is also a potential by the subcontractors to bill for labor hours that were not performed or for labor hours at a supervisor rate rather than a technician rate. The construction manager option could be considered when a qualified contractor is interested in managing the project, however, may not have the experience with the project scope and is willing and able to have direct oversight by local agency and project owner. The second item is the purchase of a fire tanker and tender. And only because it clearly the same thing as billing the parking garage. But rather than go through that item by item, I'll let you guys look. One that I want to go to my third subject because me for a long time. And again, now that I have a little extra time, I might give some experience on why. But I did outline some recent issues. But it's regarding business licenses, business registration and business liability insurance. Only person who is concerned if my fellow citizens are licensed and insured. Based on a particular experience I had over this past week, maybe the only person who even thinks we should have business licenses or rules to follow. You as the counselor probably split as well, considering how many occasions you suspend the rule. You can laugh or not laugh. As I sit here and type this, I'm wonder, I wonder, oh, yeah, I didn't get this is quick is for enforcement or abandonment of licensing altogether. However, I'm going to briefly share some of the experience of experience two years standing. First of all, I was personally denied a business license in Powell County. The reason given that they gave is the city council determined there was an adequate adequate number of landscape professionals in Powell County and did not need additional landscapers. So the lands, the license was denied. When this happened, I spoke with Commissioner Anderson. I said, what is going on? You know, with are we just granting licenses to anybody? Because this is my experience in Powell County. Do you recall this?
I do remember that.
Okay. So I thought this is absolutely, I never thought I'd get denied for a license anywhere. I go to Anaconda, buy a license, went to Helen, buy a license, Missoula, buy a license, Butte, get a license. So anyways. That that was, so that's just a background piece of information. But to move forward, whether or not I know bills on there, but there's Facebook buying, sell, this is. So a year, year and a half ago, I'm not going to name names here, but a Butte high math teacher was advertising online that he installed sprinkler systems, going so far as to name a price in the advertisement, which was 1,500 bucks. I asked him if he was licensed, insured, or if he calculated gallons per minute, pressure loss, a lot of other environmental factors the landscape professional might consider, all of which he didn't answer and basically turned it into the MEA MFT attacking me. So that that based, oh, and his daughter leaving comments on my Facebook page and a bunch of other crap. So again, we move on. About a month or two ago, there's a posting for Fire Ward online from a person from Powell County who who actually listed his location as Powell County, but was originally from Anaconda selling in the Butte classifieds. So I asked this particular person if he was licensed and insured. And and that was basically because he had this rickety old with, you know, wood basically could have fallen out if it hit a little bump. And I've hit a bump on the height and I know what a little bump will do. On and on again, you get three or four other people coming after me and all I asked was, you know, they proved that he was licensed and insured. And he said, yeah, I looked it up under his business name. So I looked it up and it was 2006 was the last time he had a license. So he deleted that particular post. Then this past weekend, 10:18, there were three people that made posts about shoveling snow. I asked each of them, are you like? And that simple question turned into a firestorm. Because when I posted or asked the question, I happened to be a 13-year-old girl. Now, I was accused of everything from harassment to bullying. Frankly, it was a comedy show, but I felt by the end of it that I put in here, it could have been a coup d'etat, I don't know how to pronounce correctly, organized by the same particular high school math teacher who seemed to be involved, or a bunch of people jumping on the bandwagon of ignorance, or basic political affiliations. I did not count, but I would estimate that over 300 people made derogatory statements or comments to me. 31 people posted negative reviews on my Facebook page and over 500 comments in total were made on two postings. I was placed in a position of defense which I upheld. The comments are all still online and you could read and see that I said nothing negative or harassing towards a particular girl. So the reason I came today and want to talk about the parking garage up and working on that, but this just just came to light is because there are so many people online in Butte that are engaged in what I consider business commerce as a business major who earned a degree in business through shoveling, mowing, painting, property maintenance, high school fundraisers, 4H groups, et cetera, or multi-level marketing commerce such as Avon, Rodenfield, Sensi Camels, Mary Kay, et cetera, that I believe based on our laws and maybe that's why I'm here. So we can all figure out what the law is and if the license should be required, but that they should have a a business license if they're conducting commerce in the city of Butte. The city and the state is the only loser. If it turns a blind blind eye, I must have, like I said, I prepared this pretty quickly. Blind effort makes sure that all, any individual that has the intent of generating personal income or regular supplemental income has an active business license. I do not consider garage table or garage or or items sold in classified advertisements to be considered regular supplemental income. However, what I think is probably the most revealing about the entire situation is that there was public officials, high school teachers, individuals employed by Butte Silver Bow, including people working in this building, based on what they're saying on their Facebook page. That made harassing and ignorant comments an attempt to make me appear as if I was bullying the girl or harassing her. What could have become a teaching example in business principles became an adult sideshow of stupidity and ignorance. In fact, the same math teacher mentioned above came to the girl's defense as if to perpetuate the disregard of local laws and standard business practices of buying a license and insurance. Now, as a side note, there's so many laws that we create, you know, the drinking laws and for for these young kids and age of consent. And if these business laws don't have an age on them, maybe we should think about putting an age on them. Because what they were saying is that because she's 13, that was, it was just in general, that she didn't need to have a license. And I look back and I think, gee, 13 when I have my first turn, I got a bit more market rule. So there's 78, 71. Well, I still have it. It was probably, sadly, we have a juvenile court. It always amazes me that a 13 or 14 or six trouble, and then they decide to get charged in adult court. What the hell do we have a juvenile court for if they're going to adult court for a charge? Why in the hell we have the laws? So anyways, the reason I put together this particular, just very briefly, was to get you to think about the cost of following the law. And there's a particular commissioner in here who I used to do business for one year. And a high school friend of mine did ended up doing work for that particular commissioner the year later. And I am, I would put money on it, that that high school friend of mine has never had a business license in the 15 years that he's mowed lawns. He's probably never bought insurance. Neither has his dad. Neither is his dad who worked for the city. So anyways, you go through this, you look at this. Let's just say all you got a small business person, whether she's in houses, mowing lawn, whatever else, selling Sensi candles. And straight across, they all make fifty thousand bucks in a year. And you get the person A who's following the laws, doing everything, comes out, you know, you can see the chart, pays his taxes and what does he have left? You go through person B, C, D, F, and you can, you know, plug in or out any of the, any of the, uh, factors. So it's, it's just something to get your, you know, put your minds on and I don't know how to make it an agenda item. But to finish what I was going here, it's with all the financial investment and time spent arguing over local business development and which agencies are responsible for the development, BLDC, Chamber, Commerce, I do not see much effort by any government agent, I've never seen anyone online, business development official or commissioner to reach out to these people. More effort and encouragement is needed at the very beginning of a business rather than five to ten years of struggling. An effort to be made at the beginning to encourage them to become law-abiding, tax-paying citizens who might go on to be successful, launch a business with a regional or national headquarters based in Butte, Montana, USA. And that's all I have for you today.
Okay. Are there any other public comments on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? All right. Seeing nobody else, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion made to adjourn and seconded. Anything on the question? All those opposed? Have a good night and happy holidays.